Streaming audio, one, two, three, four.
So we don't have to buy a new flag or something, nothing else?
We did just recently replace it, though. We did just recently replace it.
Okay, everyone, thanks for coming tonight. We're gonna go ahead and get the meeting started. If I could get you to all, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Molly, if you could help me with the roll call, please?
Sure thing. Alderperson Henry, here. Alderperson Schaefer?
Here.
Alderperson Bailey?
Here.
Alderperson Wilkin?
Here.
Alderperson Grimmer?
Here.
Alderperson Price?
Here.
Alderperson Iker?
Here.
Mayor Atwell?
Present.
Administrator Hafner?
Thank you.
Here.
Thank you very much. All right, we're gonna go on to for a special order of business. Presentation by Colin Patterson, Troop Forty-Nine, regarding his proposal for an Eagle Scout project to improve and develop the current wooded path with the new easement along north side of the Bark River between the pedestrian bridge at Liberty Park and Cushing Park. The proposed improvements include the construction and installation of two three-person benches and painted stencil blaze trail markers along the path. Colin, you wanna come up to the frontier? Yeah, you just push the red button?
Push any one of those buttons, those long buttons in the front.
All right. Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me here. So, obviously, we have... A little nervous tonight, sorry. So... So, today, I'd like to discuss my Eagle Scout project for the... For benches and trail markers along the Bark River. So, the bench is assigned... The bench location is... That we have currently is on the existing dirt walking path on the north side of the Bark River between Genesee Street and Cushing Park. We have... Yeah, I think we have some things on there. In terms of materials, we plan to use pressure-treated lumber boards, hardware, a custom plaque, filler, outdoor screws, and wood glue. And so, for the bank... Or for the bench anchoring options, I'm... I plan to be talking with Mr. Zellner about... Finding a way to anchoring those down. And I will get back to you on that. And so, another thing I'd like to propose would be adding plaques to the bench. I think people are always happy to see a little personal touch and then another community member has added to the space. So, in terms of the construction, I plan to organize a team of volunteers, including scouts, some family members, neighbors, and community volunteers to build the benches over the winter. And then I will coordinate with park officials to determine requirements of installation and an installation schedule this coming spring. I... All right. So, yeah, early spring 2024. The budget, we are currently looking at a total cost of around $300 to $400. I'm excited to undertake the... This... This project and contribute to the betterment of the Delafield community. Thank you for considering my proposal. I look forward to the opportunity to discuss this project in more detail and address any questions you may have.
Great, thank you very much, Colin. Does council have any words of wisdom or questions that they'd like to ask?
Well, I'll say, you were very respectful of our time. You gave us some good information in advance and you went through it real quickly. The... So, I appreciate the fact you're gonna talk to Park and Rec about how you anchor them. And I just, off the top of my head, when I looked at this initially, just... I just went through getting a plaque for somebody, and they're kind of expensive. Something to consider, maybe like some sort of branding or etching on the wood itself, you know, or routering or something, just an idea, because that'll be permanent, and it'll be no maintenance, and, you know, just something you might wanna think about, you could use the money toward... You know, whatever, whatever, whatever else. So, just a thought, but I think it's a great idea. I like your location. It's... Those are real scenic spots. So, thanks for thinking of Delafield when you're doing your project.
In addition to his well-prepared presentation, Colin did speak with, I believe, with Tom Hafner and also with... We spoke with Public Works and Park and Rec, and he got some good advice along the way and modified his plan to kinda keep everybody happy and suit all the requirements of the city.
That's a lesson unto itself.
Good luck trying to do that.
Good experience. Well-prepared.
Yeah, we're just grateful that you picked Delafield. Thank you. It's a wonderful project.
Thank you.
I would move to approve the trail improvement proposal as presented here.
Second.
All righty, is there any discussion?
I'd just say, come back when you're done and show it off for us.
All righty, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Thank your parents for guiding you and bringing him along.
Thank you so much for having me.
Great. Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to approval of the minutes. Five A.
Move to approve the minutes of November twentieth.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes.
I'll move to approve the minutes of November twenty-seventh.
Second.
I actually heard Mark, so I think we should give it to him.
I get extra credit for that?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. All right, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, totally missed citizens' comments. Are there any citizens that would like to make comments? Number six. Come on up, Jim.
Jim Reyer, nine-two-four.
Into the mic, please.
I'm sorry.
How's that? Jim Reyer, nine-two-four, Lake Drive, City of Delafield.
Yeah, go ahead, just to put your name.
Miki Lewis, ten-twenty-five Lake Drive, Delafield.
Well, first of all, thank you for being here to listen to our proposal, not our proposal, but the proposal that we're advocating you accept for the architecture, engineering firm, design firm that's available and wanting to do a job as it's submitted for the city of Delafield. So, because I've been involved in this for a long time, I just wanna address this issue. It's almost seven years since Chris Smith and I got together and formed this group, Delafield Arts Foundation, for the purpose of building a stage in Liberty Park after we had worked with the commission to make Liberty Park a reality. And so now, we've been collaborating with the city, I think, for this period of time to the benefit of both and in the public interest. And so I wanna thank the city for its collaboration with us and working in a partnership between government and private industry, in this case, nonprofit. So, having said that, I... I want you to know that we acted on your decision through a motion that was made a year and a half ago about to authorize funding for engineering, design, planning, and drawing related to this project. Now, in the process, the board responded to that... That motion and that decision. And that response was that we get together and find a... An expert in the field to match and be consistent with that particular order. We were following it to a T by contacting architecture and in particular, their principal, Blake Thyson. And that occurred recently in 2023 and resulting in the proposal that he has submitted to you. And you'll find from that proposal, it's... It shows and reflects upon his reputation in the community. This is one of the leaders in the state of Wisconsin on parks and recreation and putting together stages. And he has demonstrated that by recently receiving an award as a designer award for his project in Two Rivers, which is one of the projects that we have been looking at and showing to the public. And the public's response to that particular design was very favorable. And we certainly have a picture of it. It's... We showed it at every event, and we have done our due diligence, resulting in our board meeting. And at our board meeting, we unanimously approved the proposal. That was then taken to the Park and Recreation Commission where it was, again, unanimously approved. So, now we are here, hopefully, to follow the similar guidance that we've provided by both the Park and Recreation Commission and our board. And so, during the time that we're here, if we get back on the agenda later, if you have any questions, certainly ask me or anyone else from the board. I wanna also advise all of you that our board feels so strongly about this that we have support from each member of the board, officers of the Delafield Arts Foundation here in support of it. You're certainly welcome to ask them of any questions. One of our board members is an architect, and she's had a chance to review this proposal as well and supports it. And we have met with Blake Thyson. He made a personal appearance before the board. I met with him also at the site, and he gave a lot of time and energy to advocate for this because he really believes in parks and recreation, and we believe in what he's done. A lot of hard work, a lot of hours spent, and it's all for good. And I just want you to know that this is an act of collaboration, a continuation of working together. Working together with the partnership of the city and the Delafield Arts Foundation and facilitating a great opportunity. We're at the river of opportunity here, and we wanna cross the bridge. And this is the mechanism we can get from A to B to maybe get C. But we want no C until we get to B. And so, as a result, this is our ridge... Our bridge over the River of Opportunity to make a reality. We really believe strongly, and I wanna also thank all members of you who have attended our outdoor concerts that we've done to further determine the interest that we have here. Keep in mind, about a year and a half, just before COVID, we presented a survey to you all about the interest in the stage, and it was hundreds, a couple hundred people signed this survey in support of it, and it was presented to you. So, there's great interest, and I have never heard anybody act negatively toward the concerts that we've been doing. It's been really positive, and I appreciate your attendance and cooperation with it. So, with that, I will certainly give up my speech, so to speak. Gotta understand, as a lawyer, it's hard to do that sometimes. But... And let Miki give her view of things. And again, I wanna thank all of you for your continued support of our efforts to get this a reality. We need to cross that river. Thank you.
So, I think what we're asking for today is to move forward with what proposal is for the drawing on the stage. And I'm uncertain where everybody's at and if you've seen, you know, what we've proposed in general, the drawing. This is a different stage? Rivers?
We have the other stage.
I've seen three or four different versions over time, and quite honestly, I don't know where you're at now.
Okay. So, where we're at now is we have... We would like to move forward with architect to do the design of the stage for us. So, we've obtained a proposal for that, and we're submitting that.
One final remark. I wanna make sure I don't miss this. Alderman Schaefer has been really, really helpful in moving this forward, and I wanna thank him personally and also professionally in the way he's done this. And he's really been a terrific advocate for us along the way, and I want you to know and recognize that.
Yes, maybe you can help me. Do you have pictures that you can share with us of the concept that you're thinking or a few different ones?
Absolutely.
If they're in the packet, I don't see them.
Are we pulling?
Are we just on citizens' comments right now, right?
Yeah.
Still give them up if you wanna share them.
Yeah, we could.
While this is going on.
Are we gonna bring them back up again?
We could bring them back up again during the agenda.
Okay.
A twofer.
Sorry. I don't know where everybody's at and, you know, what you've seen and what you haven't seen.
Okay, so, I guess you're done with your citizens' comments. We probably shouldn't have had you come up at citizens' comments to begin with in the first place. We shouldn't just had you come up when your agenda item was on.
Okay.
I'll introduce, give some background on that.
Okay.
It went through Park and Rec, and then we can call them back up.
Should I...
Yeah. And you'll have a chance to do that when we have you come back up, okay? Okay, sounds great. Are there any other citizens' comments for tonight? Any other citizens' comments? Okay. Citizens' comments are now closed. Again, we'll bring you back up when you're on the agenda item, and we'll move on to the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I actually...
Yeah, I actually have a question on consent agenda item A. Are those two separate things? You have election inspectors in parentheses, poll workers, but then you have all party nominated election inspectors parenthetically, poll workers. What's the difference?
Election inspectors and poll workers are the same thing. Wisconsin, like, the Elections Commission calls them election inspectors, but more commonly, they're known as poll workers. So that's kind of the fancy term as opposed to the poll worker. So that's why it's in parentheses. The party nominees include, on November thirtieth, the Republican and Democratic Parties nominate poll workers that we have to have on our list of appointed poll workers. So it's just indicating that those are included on the list here in full.
Okay, thank you. I was just confused with double names. They look similar. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes. Okay, we'll move on to boards, committees, and commission reports. Number eight, licenses.
The town of Delafield did finally approve the license transfer agreement for Brunch. So we need to approve our version of the, or our end of the agreement to move forward. At that point, we will proceed with the standard license application process, which will be the publication and then approving the license to be granted with issuance pending the occupancy like we have in the past for these types of things where they're still kind of working on the actual business. So just need a motion to approve that agreement.
I move to approve the agreement.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes. All right, moving right along to eight B, Planning Commission. Mr. Iker.
Yeah, Plan Commission had a meeting at the end of November. One of the key topics that we're pursuing is updating the code on the allowable sizes of outbuildings based on lot sizes and zoning. It's just really to not have so many things come under the discretion of, yeah, it looks good, by the Plan Commission, to have something more codified to say, these are allowed, and the building inspector can just expedite the process. So we're working through that. So that's ongoing. And then also, we've got three items here for approval based on some previously approved projects. One of them is item ten, let's see here. It'll be eight B to A, which is for Kettle Court. That's Mr. Barker is requesting a stormwater management, maintenance agreement for the construction of a storage building on an existing site. He continues to have good business and good business opportunities where he's expanding. And this was a building that was approved a while back, and this is a stormwater maintenance agreement for that project. So I'll make a motion to approve the stormwater maintenance agreement for thirty-eight seven five Kettle Court East.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes.
Same property, thirty-eight seven five. This is for a water main and sanitary sewer easement agreement. I'll make a motion to approve that as well.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes.
All right. And then the next one is for a place everyone's hoping to open soon. This is for the Commodore Restaurant, which formerly Seven Seas, where the sign was approved for permanent signage at the front of the building with some uplighting. And I'll just suggest that we go with the Plan Commission's approval, but also add, well, let me make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the signage as presented for eighteen oh seven Nagawicke Road as presented by the Plan Commission and approved with the caveat that, or the provision that the uplighting for the sign be turned off within one hour of their closing or midnight, whichever is later. And that's, I don't think there was a discussion about how long the light should be on. I just don't think they need them on at three AM, so.
Within an hour after closing or midnight, whichever is later?
Correct, correct.
I like that, and I think it's very sensible, not just for the neighbors, but for the wild critters that meander at night. They get very confused by the lights, so.
Yeah, and that sign is a long way from the road, so it shouldn't be too intrusive to the neighbors. Let's set back way back nicely.
All right, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes.
And our next Plan Commission meeting is in two days, Wednesday, in this room. So that is it for Plan Commission.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, Lake Welfare Committee, Mr. Price.
Our meeting was canceled.
We'll move on to D, Park and Rec. Mr. Schaefer.
We voted, obviously, to refer two items to the council tonight, the Eagle Scout Project and the Arts Foundation proposal. And one additional item, there's a thanks to be shared, that Josh Davies' bench was installed. If you recall, he's the Delafield resident that died tragically last summer. And the family donated for a memorial bench that was placed in Liberty Park. And they wanted to pass along thank you to the city, the council, the public works, and the friends that made it possible. And I met with the public works guys when they were installing it. And I don't know whose idea it was, they put a tarp over it so that the family gathered there later and was able to unveil it. And it was a small touch that made a big difference. Anyway, they passed along their thanks to everybody.
Sounds great. All righty, we'll move on to Public Works. Mr. Grimmer.
No meeting, no report. Next meeting is January third.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to F, Delahard. Mr. Iker.
Let's see, so Delahard, we had a meeting just before Christmas party last Thursday. And that was just to settle a petition about timeliness of filing an assessment. And our next meeting won't be until January, I think, third Tuesday in January. And that's it for Delahard. Other than, this will bring, I shouldn't make this like an aside. Scott Luzek has been the general manager for a long time, and he is retiring. And we've got a replacement, so this is his last year. If anyone cares to go stop in at Delahard, he will probably be there for a day or two more till he's gone. But we appreciate his years of service. He's done great by us. So goodbye to Scott and hello to Rob. That's it for Delahard.
Thank you very much. Okay, Police Commission.
No meeting, no report.
Library Board, Ms. Henry.
The Library Board did meet last week. However, I was unable to attend, so I will refer you to page ninety-eight of the packet for the director's report and refer you to the minutes. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Zoning Board of Appeals, Ms. Fallon.
No meeting, no report.
There we go. J, Promotion and Tourism Committee, back to Mr. Schaefer.
No meeting, no report.
Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission, I would refer you to their meetings on the, posted on their website. L, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board, Mr. Grimmer.
No meeting. The only report I would have is the municipalities continue to discuss the funding formula. Next meeting is not until January.
Sounds good. Thank you. Deer Management Committee.
Meeting from last month. Our firm reported that we've harvested so far four deer in the city of Delafield, one from one of the city's stands and three on private property. But we're getting good usage of the stands. We've had a hundred and ninety participants in the first sixty days, and there are a total of three hundred and thirty appointments that are set up. So we're getting good usage there. We had a guest speaker from the town of Delafield, Deer Management Committee, to share what they're doing out there. They're getting a lot more deer than we are. Most of theirs are coming from the Ethan Allen School down near Wales. And they've got a nice plot down there with several stands. The big difference is that their Deer Management Committee is entirely volunteer-run and volunteer-funded as opposed to being funded by the town.
Dirk, did you say four deer?
Four.
Four. Okay. And we've had a hundred and ninety individuals on those stands?
Yep.
Can we attribute that to the lack of snow or something?
We also have trail cams out there, and we've seen activity, but the hunters aren't seeing the deer. So we suspect that most of the activity is.
Coming to my back, Garrett, I'll show them there.
I agree, Paul. So.
Dirk, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that, you know, there's a process when you use the stands that you're supposed to report it back to the committee. But we do get a total at the end of the year from the DNR where you're required to register the deer. And we get updated numbers, and those often reflect deer that were taken in our municipality that the hunter just didn't follow our own city procedure to call the Deer Management Committee and let them know. So there generally is a disconnect between what we get and then ultimately what they report to the DNR, and the DNR tells the Deer Management Committee.
Great, thank you. Next meeting is next month. That's all I have.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Okay, nothing on the mayor's report. We'll move on to eleven, new business, discussion of possible action regarding library, Liberty Park, stage conceptual design proposal submitted by the Delafield Arts Foundation as requested by Alderperson Schaefer. Come on back up. Now we can ask you questions.
So a little background. As you know, the council previously approved work for design, proof of concept, et cetera. We've spent some of that on temporary stage for two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. With that, there's still funding adequate to fund this proposal. I think from the, this gives, this would give us rough concept drawings and also rough pricing, which would be two fundraising slash sponsorship tools that the Arts Foundation is looking for to help them go to potential sponsors and say, this is what it's going to look like, and also to know what sort of level of fundraising they're after. At this point, we don't know what that is. That said, I think Park and Rec referred it to the council for consideration. We did add the request that any costing, concept costing would be multi-tier, right? Sort of a good, better, best. You know, it could look like this. Here's a budget, you know, small budget, medium budget, whatever, so that we could look at some different ranges when the time comes. That said, I think the question for us is, is this the right firm, the right proposal, and the right timing, right? So.
The Two Rivers photos that you're passing around, those, do we, do you guys have an estimate on what that cost, Two Rivers? Just for perspective?
Yeah, I can address that. I've talked to the Park and Recreation Commissioner for the Two Rivers. I've also talked to, of course, Blake and considered other due diligence. And it's a little bit difficult to break down because there are a lot of moving parts to it in terms of who's doing what. But if you have to go to the park to see it, it is an amazing accomplishment. It's a pie-shaped lot. It's very small. And on top of this pie-shaped lot, you have restrooms, storage area, concessions on top of this stage. And it's overcrowded. One of the things you need to know is, each one I've talked to, I've gone to twenty different stages in Wisconsin, Minnesota, Florida. So in this situation, they have a crowd they have to put out in the street and block the street off. It's downtown. It's an urban stage. This is more rural here. But what you need to know is that they had to do a lot of putting chicken salad out of you-know-what because of the limited space. But what they did in breaking it down, they can't give you a specific cost because a lot of different people came into play here. But the cost of just the stage is hard to isolate. The whole project, they had splash pads. They had, they're going to have pickleball courts, I think, and the next is up. Of course, who doesn't? And so for that matter, in answer to your question, it's hard to say, but it's closer to maybe in the five hundred main range. But it's not specific because there's so many different moving parts. That's the difficulty.
I think the Two Rivers is probably more grand than what we're looking for. This is the design that everybody kind of voted on and in general was the most popular. But if you're looking at what Jim is saying, and they had a lot of grading issues and things that we don't think are going to be an issue. And architecture has said that that essentially won't be an issue either. And one of the things that we brought up at the previous meeting as well is, for example, it has brick design and steps. And so what we're looking at would probably be a little bit less than this, but along these lines.
So when we talk about pricing tiers, what tiers are we looking to have priced? One hundred, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, seven fifty, one point two? I mean, what are our tiers? I know what my personal tiers would probably be, but I'm kind of curious what the council's tiers would be. Because you're not going to get anything for a hundred grand.
Well, I can help maybe on that part. I did discuss that with Blake, and they do that on a regular basis for the obvious reasons, cost benefit. And each place, stage is different from the other. So although the twenty that I saw, there's similarities, but they're all differences. But in the ones that he's doing, he has a way to assess that, evaluate. It's part of his evaluation, his conceptual thinking of how it would fit to this location. And so as a result, the tier system is something he's very interested in because everyone is different. He's, everyone I've talked to that worked with him, by the way, everyone that I've talked, every Park and Recreation Commission, favorable beyond. They were all impressed by him, not just as a technician and the things that he does technically and competently. It's his relationships with the clients, his attention to detail, his working and following up. I mean, he's, as I say, a leader in the industry. At the association meetings and statewide, he is there to speak. They bring him in. He's a young guy, but he's really done a great job. He's, he put the, when he worked for his prior firm, he put the cityscape here in Delafield.
And did he give tiers for this, for the site when he saw it? Like the tiers for, the request was for three-tiered prices?
Right. So we, right now, what we have is a quote from architecture for him to do the design. And part of that request for architecture doing the design is going to be, come back with a good, better, best store. In this case, I think what Jim is saying is, we're not necessarily targeting a price, although the first that you mentioned versus the latter is more likely. But we're, might be like, this has benches in it. We're not doing benches. So, you know, he could come back with, well, if we want to, you know, wrap the stage in stone or do something a little bit different. So it'll be more along those lines. But we don't have that from him yet because that's what we're looking to get.
Okay.
The original proposal, well, the one that's here is for one concept, one price. Park and Rec, when they went in front of Park and Rec, the commission said, can we do this at multiple levels so that we have, we can see what the options, we could see some options and see what some price ranges would be? So they haven't.
Yeah, that's.
They haven't taken that back to the proposal yet.
In all the times I've been doing this, when showing it to the public, the only, the questions that come up every time, what's the cost, what's the design? Those are the two questions all people want to know, whether, and for when I'm talking to business leaders or individuals down the street, those are the two. That's what this report that we want from him to do. He is the expert.
Essentially, where we're at right now is, after the two, last two concert seasons, Essentially, where we're at right now is, after the two, last two concert seasons, the community wants to see what it's going to look like. And we, you've seen the poster boards with various designs, as you mentioned. But we kind of narrowed it down. We'd like to get the one that fits this community and be able to show it to community business owners, concert attendees.
So Mark, is this request coming from, based on a budget that was approved for Park and Rec? And a presentation from the Delfield Arts Foundation that was already approved by Park and Rec to us? And we're looking to say, yeah, Park and Rec wants to spend the sixteen thousand and change on this plan, based on a meeting that Park and Rec had? Is this a recommendation from Park and Rec to us?
It's a referral to us. It was unanimously approved to send it to council.
I think the funds are already set aside.
Park and Rec said yes.
Because it's a funding.
And this is money that was associated with a budget that's already been passed?
Right.
And Park and Rec wants to spend that money on this?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just, I'm not sure if we're shopping or buying. I mean, I, so Park and Rec did, well, I want them to do all the shopping. I want us to just be the oversight. And it sounds like a decision's made by Park and Rec that this is a good idea based on money that's been approved and the stepping process where the proof of concept with the, with the tents and the, and the test concerts and that, this is, we're following the process that Jim described about going to the next step. And that this is a logical next step that Park and Rec says, yes. This is money that's been approved to be spent and this is going to take us to where we need to go. Is that right?
The council funding that was previously approved, and Park and Rec is saying, yes, this is a logical next step.
I mean, logical, but they want to do it. I mean, they're like, yes, let's do it.
They voted for it.
They voted for it unanimously, is my understanding. I don't understand, A, we always take guidance from the committees when plan, commission submits something. When Parks and Rec, when Lake Welfare, we tend to take that advice. And that's what I see as just, this is to me just ticking the box to say, great, nice homework. We, Parks and Rec unanimously supports it. Our Arts Council Foundation unanimously supports it. So I would submit that's what we do and say, yeah, go get that design and let's see what happens next.
I got a couple of questions.
My Park and Rec hat says, yes, this is the right next step. My common council hat says, I would like to refer this for legal and city engineer review before we.
But what can they review, Mark? There's nothing to review. There's no design.
It's a contract, right? Is this, is the specification of this contract appropriate?
Okay, gotcha.
Just, I don't know that Park and Rec is, has that, that expertise.
Well, we do have an attorney working on it.
I was just going to say, did, did you say city engineer?
Yeah.
Okay, I would think probably city attorney?
DPW?
What's that?
Or DPW to look, to, to look at the specification. Is this the right project?
There's not, there's not a lot of substance to the, there's not a lot of substance to it as far as engineering review.
Okay. So I, I have a couple of questions. So some of the designs I've seen in the past have been, I would, I'll just say more elaborate. They've had bathrooms, changing rooms, requirements for, you know, you know, substantial infrastructure to be put in. Based on what I'm seeing in this picture, that, that's not what we're talking about now, is that correct?
We're not talking about that now.
No, we, initially, when we started this process.
Yeah, I'm just wondering where we are now. I'm not, I don't want, I don't need a history lesson.
No restrooms, no storage.
What, so that's where we are now?
Because of the cost.
Okay.
Cost is enormous.
It's similar to the, the four poles and a roof is basically what we're looking at that's aesthetically pleasing.
And the electrical, that's significant.
Okay.
That has to go into the mix. And it's just one of his strengths is the electricity and how you get that in there so people can hear what's going on in a way. He's, Grant Blake is also an established musician. And so he has all that.
I appreciate that. So this, this contract, it's for the building design only? Or is he designing other things like the infrastructure that would be needed to support it, i.e. electrical? Is, is that going to be, I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, and maybe you know, maybe you don't know, I, I don't know. Is, is that going to be part of the proposal you get back after this money is spent and he completes his work?
Well, yes, because this is not the end game from the standpoint of what you're asking. Is it, what he does is you, when you look at the proposal, his contract proposal, is that he does a lot of onsite connection with the clients, what they want, what they do, what they want to do in terms of money versus the benefit. It's all cost benefit, risk reward in terms of how he analyzes things, as it's been explained to me. So that's why I say when it's attention to detail, that's what he's going to do.
And Tom, is that sort of thing that, that I think goes beyond Park and Rec's area of expertise? What sort of, you know, infrastructure considerations need to be part of this? What's the scope?
But wouldn't that happen after the design?
What would you expect the scope of this to be?
Wouldn't it happen after? It says we're proposing ideas, a model, and three tiers, am I correct? So three different costs. Wouldn't we then take this and look at our legal, our engineering and park and everything after we actually have something to look at?
Yeah, so that's one way you could do it.
Okay.
That was not our original plan. You know, the reason why we budgeted fifty thousand dollars instead of seventeen thousand dollars was because the effort was going to be much more substantial than this. This is six bullet points is the entire scope of services. The scope of services is to come up with some conceptual renderings about what the stage would look like. You might do this effort for seventeen thousand dollars and later find out that this is unbuildable at that site. The fifty thousand dollar proposal was going to include soil borings. It was going to include civil engineering. It was going to look at infrastructure and bringing electric to the site. And are we going to, are we going to be bringing plumbing to the site for any purposes? And, and that whole thing, doing a complete survey of the property and coming up with the, the topography of the property and understand if there's going to be any significant cut, cutting and filling of, of earthwork involved with the project. This level of effort isn't going to give you that.
And those are the kind of things that are beyond really Park and Rec's consideration, right? That wasn't part of the decision.
This is a totally different type of effort. And it's not to say it's wrong to do this effort. It's just taking one step before doing the entire design. But like I said, you could look into this and then find out that because of the soils on site or whatever, that, you know, building this is not, not feasible.
And, and I agree, there isn't a right or wrong answer. I just want to understand what, what we're buying, right? That, that, that's the only purpose of my questions, to understand what we're buying. And then we have, and my last question is that, you know, as Tom said, we budgeted fifty thousand. We've spent some of that money over two years. And does somebody know the map that we indeed have the money available for this contract based on the commitments we've already made?
There is, yes, there is. Based on what we spent this year and what we've allocated for next year.
So one concern that I do have is this proposal's for just about seventeen thousand dollars. And we talked about adding multiple options. Is that going to add to the cost? Is that expected? Because I think the seventeen thousand puts us right up to the fifty thousand dollar budget. If I remember correctly, year one, we budgeted fifteen thousand for the temporary stage. Year two, we budgeted seventeen thousand, I think, is, is where we're at. So that'd be thirty-two plus the seventeen is going to put us at forty-nine. So there's really not any room to, well, there's a thousand dollars to expand.
If you, if you look at the proposal, he specifically says, the fees identified above shall be fixed unless substantial changes in the scope of work occur. And so his, so if you have any questions about this, what, what we're trying to get to is get an agreement that this is the right thing consistent with what was ordered or decided a year and a half ago involving design, which this provides, provides planning, which this provides. He's a planner, professional planner, provides engineering, which his firm is. His partner has a civil engineering degree and she's an active engineer that way. And then also drawings. So if you look at what is laid out in the, the decision a year and a half ago as to what is to be done, this particular firm does the services and beyond, but it's a stipulated amount that unless there's a substantial change, which have to be reviewed, that's what they're going to have to do. And you have to also appreciate the fact that this is a leader in the industry in the state that knows more probably about these types of parks and recreation stages than anybody. I mean, people aren't going to him for their services all over the state if they have some question about him. I mean, everyone I've talked to has been completely supportive of what he does and how he does it. And it's been a lot of time.
I don't think there's a disagreement about architecture. I think what you're asking is, we're not completely positive if getting a good, better, best is going to be varying amount. He's worked with us quite a bit over the last year at no charge and just, he's come out and been in the area. He's done numerous of these. He hasn't given us an indication that it's going to be all over the board. We wouldn't expect that. But I think that that would be fair to ask him. I wouldn't see that it would change the price substantially to do a good, better, best. Yeah, I just want to, I'm, I'm looking at Joan.
We have four mics if anybody else would like to come on. Just bring a chair, please.
Joan is, is part of the Arts Foundation and she's an architect as well. And so she probably could talk to this a little bit.
Yeah, I'm Joan Sweet, I'm also an architect, not this architect. I'm just part of the board and I live in the community.
Can I get your full name and address and spelling, please?
All right, Joan Sweet, thirteen sixteen Nega Wicker Street.
Sweet S W E E T?
Correct.
Okay.
So I mean, typically, when I've been given projects like this, you're going to do the conceptual drawing based on what the city and our board is asking him to do. I mean, I, my understanding of all of this is he's going to do this proposal, he's going to give us budgetary numbers. It'll then come back to the city and the engineering will look at it, Park and Rec will look at it. And we can give them, you know, feedback so we can get what everybody is looking for. I mean, so his plan is to, you know, for this seventeen, is it?
Sixteen nine forty.
Sixteen nine, that he's going to do these drawings with budgetary numbers that are real numbers, not pie in the sky numbers, you know. We've all been on those budgets where there's just a number and then, you know, they're going to put hard numbers to this based on the concept. But nobody can get any further with this project without a picture of what it's going to look like and numbers. Because how do we raise money for something we don't know what we're looking at?
Could you just expand on the necessity to have conceptual drawings for your fundraising purposes?
Why do we need those?
Yeah. I know why. I want everybody else to.
Nobody wants to donate towards something they don't know what it is. I mean, we take it to people and they're like, well, how much money are you trying to raise? We don't know. What's it going to look like? We don't know. I mean, this is like step one to get this thing off the ground.
And we've done some, some fantastic fundraising so far. We've paid for all of the entertainment, all of the bands, all the music that we paid for by the Arts Foundation.
And we've gotten a lot of people interested that are interested in donating if they know what it's going towards.
Right.
One of the common phrases I got in from.
Microphone.
I'm sorry. Okay. One of the common phrases I get is, what's the bang for my buck? What's the, you know, what am I going to get? And so the other part is, you know, I've got to know what the cost and, and what the design is and what, what is it in for me as a business? And that means naming rights, levels of contributions, donors. You know, in order to get a donor to have legacy on some naming rights, there are no naming rights on a tent. There are only naming rights on a permanent stage. If you want your legacy to be part of a stage, then you have to put some money into it. Like each one of the stages I have seen and interviewed Park and Rec, there are names of people who are in perpetuity. For example, in Menominee Falls, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar in perpetuity contribution. That's a legacy for those people. And that's, that can't be changed. And that's what people are interested in looking at. Is what is logically, you know, do I get bang for the buck, for my buck? They're willing to do it, but they want to know what they're getting. And we don't know that until we get cost and design to sell it to the idea the public wants that. As they say, there are no naming rights on a tent.
There, there are sponsorship resp, opportunities with that type of operation, right? The concerts in the gardens, Wimmer, Wimmer Properties pays for the entertainment, they pay for the tent. Their banner is on the tent. They've been doing it for twenty-five years. So there are opportunities at that level, too.
But we're trying to move it forward.
Yeah.
We've been looking at this for how many years now?
Well, we started this seven years ago.
Okay. So it's been a while and I think we're at a point now where we want to move forward. There's a saying in my profession, which is education, if you aim at nothing, you will hit it. And so we're trying to aim at something. This isn't the technical drawing that will construct the actual project, but it is enough to give people the image and that's where all the details come in.
Right, and we're also only committing to this, you know, for the preliminary planning.
Right, yeah. And the money's already been approved, so, yeah, I just feel like we're.
Something different. You know, we can proceed forward with him for what's, you know, the construction drawings and the final engineering drawings. But if, you know, that needs to go out to bid to three different people, that's what we need.
Well, I, I think there's an acceptance that this is a, a public-private partnership. However this ends up, that the city of Delafield's expectation, at least this council's expectation is this is majority privately funded. Hence the necessity to have these drawings. As, as was mentioned, yes, we could have a rental of fifteen to seventeen thousand dollars every year for the next ten years and spend a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars. Or we could pony up sixteen nine forty right now and finally have some concrete, consistent drawings that we could potentially propose to donors. Donors that have approached the Arts Foundation, donors that have approached the city from time to time. Those didn't come to fruition for various reasons. But one of those reasons were the lack of drawings, the lack of what am I getting for my money?
Exactly.
One question I had as far as the good, better, best kind of thing. You've mentioned just maybe some rock, like rock work or, or it sounded more like it was aesthetic differences. Is that, is that what I'm getting?
Just as an example, like on, on this one, you know, if you remove the rock, the, the stone.
I'm sorry, the stone.
You know, I mean, the cost is going to vary because of different aesthetic.
So maybe like a raised wood stage. I guess my thought would be, is would, would it be more practical to have, I mean, because there's some things like, and I, you know, we're going back to like the, the restrooms and things like that. But having, you know, when you're talking about the tiered, we're talking about lowest tier and then that kind of a difference between practical differences between the two. I would rather see a big difference in the good, better, best and have practical differences in them than just stonework, kind of. That, that would be my, my recommendation on that.
Okay.
And, and that might be a difference in donors and what they're willing to give. Like, we want to see restrooms and changing rooms and things and you might, as far as that. For me, as looking at what you're doing, I would rather see that than, oh, this is going to have some different stonework than.
Keep in mind, once we start putting all those types of things in, we're well over a million dollars.
For sure, but I would ra, I mean, if I'm going to be looking at three different proposals, I would like to see some practical differences in those, not just the stone, or not just the stonework. That would be my, my input on that.
And another concept would be, hey, here's a stage with four poles and a roof and we're putting it in the ground on grass. That's, you know, good. Better is we have a concrete pad with a stage under the four poles and the roof. And then maybe best is we have all those things plus some architectural features and stonework surrounding the stage. I guess that's kind of the way I've visioned it.
Or that, too. But, but that's, that's what I was getting at, too. It's just I'd like to see a functional difference between those, not just the aesthetic.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I'm, I'm thinking more along the lines of what you're talking about because I think that might actually contribute to a big cost difference in the design. difference in the design.
Just one other example that was pointed out to me when I looked at this stage.
In a fourth tier, to always consider is a fifteen thousand dollar rental stage for, I don't know, divided by a million dollars, you could do that for sixty years.
It won't always be the same price, though. You realize that. Prices go up versus architectural.
But a million dollars today is worth fifteen thousand dollars tomorrow.
Was there, was it, was the Park and Rec meeting that was voted on, fully attended? I mean, what was the vote? Was it a unanimous vote from Park and Rec?
Yes.
All right. And so, I mean, I understand that, so Park and Rec's been looking at this as long as we have.
Longer.
And they have competing priorities for money and where their money goes. I mean, seventeen thousand dollars gets some, some nice amenities in different parks that you can snap your fingers and they're up by, in the next summer. You know, not, nothing grand, but new swing sets, a pickleball court, foundation. But understanding that the different priorities, if Park and Rec is saying, this is the best use of this money, this was approved in the budget as a part of this plan two or three years ago, I, I'm, I'm curious why this, why we're being so tentative about approving what Park and Rec sent us, is my question. So, I mean, I'll, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the execution of this contract pending legal review by our attorney. I'll second.
Swear of the comment I have is, you know, you've had some time to try to realize how much, how you would raise money potentially. I'd encourage you to, to put your heads together and come up with what you think your limit could be. And then have your design firm here stay under that limit, you know, just try to set reasonable expectation for what you think you can raise to, to, to make the likelihood of this becoming a reality someday better. If it's so expensive that you can never raise a good portion of the money to get there, you know, I, you know, I don't think we're as productive as we might have been if that were to turn out that way, so.
But you could always keep, I mean, we would have three tiers essentially. And depending on the number of donors, the interest, et cetera, over the next X number of months or years, you'd be able to gauge that. If you only get a hundred thousand dollars with a interest, well, you know what tier you're in. If you get a million dollars of interest, well, then you know what tier you're in.
Woo-hoo.
Well, once, once we have in place something to show people.
We've got a motion.
That's different.
Right. We have a motion and a second.
And we got a second. We're discussing.
So to the mayor's point, the necessity of, of the city isn't going to do this fundraiser, you know, isn't going to do this advertising, this fundraising. That's all on the Arts Foundation, for, for better or worse.
As it has been.
As it always has been, right?
All right. Is there any other discussion?
The only question I have is, it sounds like this is the, the rest of that fifty grand. Does that then eliminate concerts for next summer? Because our budget is empty?
No, this, this accommodates both. The budget accommodates.
But for twenty twenty-five, there would be no money.
This is sink or swim right now. Okay, let's go.
All right.
We've got one year to get it done.
Let's stop talking. Let's decide.
We can do both.
It's either going to go or it's not. Let's go.
To have, to have this worked on and another season under our belts, right, to see how it goes and to see if our interest is, is increasing.
Make it count. Let's go.
Okay.
We'll know more, we'll know a lot more next summer.
And I would say then that would point to the urgency that architecture gets something together, you know, before the summer.
Right. That's our plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time on this. Thank you.
Although, the work just started.
You're welcome, I guess. My law practice is suffering.
Okay, we'll move on to new business eleven B, approval of vouchers.
I move to approve the voucher list.
Second. I have one question, Tom. If you could, it doesn't have to, if you know the answer, great. Otherwise, just bring it back. There's a fifteen hundred dollar charge in there for a copier lease? I don't know if we're buying an old copier or what. I'd just like to know what that's, what that's for. If you know it, just tell me.
Molly, do you know that off the top of your head?
I do. I discovered the lease situation a couple of years ago when I first started. And the fact of the matter is, is we are locked into a terrible copier lease contract, and it's going to cost the, company is in Illinois, and we have consulted with the attorney. We would have to get an attorney out of Illinois. And the cost to try to get out of the contract at this point may exceed the amount that's left and burning through the contract, unfortunately. So it's just.
It seemed odd. Okay, okay. So it is odd?
It is odd.
All right, that's all I wanted to know.
But, but it's a legit payment under the deal that was signed at the time.
All right, gotcha.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions passes. City administrator.
Yeah, just one item. I want to expand a little bit upon what older person Grimmer said during the, about the fire discussions with our partner municipalities. We did have the first meeting with them on December sixth. I think the positives are, we've got everybody in the same room. People are talking. People are listening. We did present our proposal. There was mixed reaction to it. Some people said absolutely not. Others are, you can see their, their wheels are churning. But we meet with them next, this week, Wednesday on the twentieth. And the other partner municipalities are going to be looking at the funding formula and bringing to us their thoughts on what should be done with any change to the funding formula. So that's where we're at right now. And then there is a third and final meeting scheduled with the group on January third.
Great. Thank you very much. Twelve B, city clerk.
Just a reminder that all candidacy paperwork for the spring election will be due January second, twenty twenty-four at five P M. For anybody out there, I will not be in the office for much of the end of the year. So if anybody does have any specific questions, I will be in on December twenty-seventh. So I would encourage anybody to reach out to me that day or, or tomorrow, if there is any help with anybody that's out there circulating paperwork. Otherwise, I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, C, city treasurer. I'll refer you to the report in the packet for October twenty twenty-three. Any council requests for future agenda items? Okay, if you have any, reach out to Tom after the meeting. Free to correspond into the packet. Seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at eight oh five.